Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for January 26, 2023. This will be a budget session today. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Huh.
I guess we weren't ready.
I guess we weren't ready.
I guess.
I just saw a white head bounce.
Oh, there he is.
Okay. Well, sorry.
So whose head did I see?
I think that we were all looking at the fact that I wasn't ready.
Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Paul?
Here.
Little? Schwartz?
Here.
That's how I feel too.
Uh, Dr. Oka?
Here.
Layland?
Here.
Would everyone please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Let's catch our breath because we're confused.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item one is the agenda received as proposed or amended.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Great. And it looked like Tom joined us. Great. Glad to have you with us, Tom.
Yes.
Discussion, consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year 24 Blackhawk County budget. And are we leading in with Al or?
We are leading in with Al and I think he does a presentation for you today.
Okay, super.
All right. Good morning, Board. Al, you IT Director. I just have a small slide for you, just a few slides, just kind of go over some of the key points of the budget. All right. Well, let's just start down the list, so starting with revenue. IT is usually not a big revenue maker, but I just wanted to point out a few points on the revenue. We are increasing our revenue by 8.7%. And that's actually due to contributions from different departments, so that would be assessors, engineering and public health. They are contributing for the Esri Enterprise GIS licenses for the software. So they're, in addition, the assessors are also contributing for Microsoft 365 licensing. So we cover, our department covers all departments for 365 license except for assessors. So since they're technically a secondary entity, they have to pay their own. And there was an increase in the Microsoft fees because Microsoft likes to do that. That was back in March. So we still have contributions from local abstract companies. I think there's two of them. Those, those fees remain the same and we have no sales of, no sale of capital assets. So any questions regarding revenue?
Thank you.
So salaries and benefits. So this is projected to increase by 9.59%. We are formally requesting a shared .5 FTE. This is a position that I spoke with Caitlin with the public, public health, and it would also decrease public health FTE by .5 as well. This position would be covered by IT, 50% of their salary and benefits, we cover IT. So in a way, it's sort of kind of a wash. But we, we felt that this would be a great use of one, of this position, so we can offer better coverage. Caitlin, do you have anything to add regarding this position?
I do, and I will also cover it in my presentation as well.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, I was gonna say a little more detail on that would be good, so I'll say, great.
Yep, so the, the funding source for the salary is the same source, so that, that's not an issue. I believe on the salary scale, they're very, very close as well. I think they're only one apart. The, the job duties will be a combination of, of health. I believe it's the, what's the, it's the analyst?
Information.
Information analyst position. I think the job title will probably stay the same on the description. But this position would also share duties of our network technician role, which is similar to what Deb and Cory do. So, and then the FTE will reside at public health at Pinecrest, but not exclusively, so they can be running time. So. Any questions regarding the request?
All right, great.
All right, operating expenses. So I've said many times, I like to focus on professional development. I think it's incredibly important for staff to continue their, their learning and education. So I've, I've reallocated a lot of funds that were in different line items and put them into training, education, and travel and mileage. And that will help us continue with continuing learning. Overall, the operating expense did increase by 21.88%. The reason why is because below the Esri GIS enterprise agreement, that was, if you, and Supervisor Paul, you weren't here. So with the enterprise agreement, they gave us a three-year staggered promotion. So the, the second year, it's, it's a little more expensive, so the difference is what's adding to the operating expense. Also, I reallocated funds from capital. So that, that really bumped up the operating expense because I moved monies from the capital line item up to the minor computer. But you can also see further down under capital that that is now a negative 89%.
And where, just trying to follow you, okay, down further in the next page.
Sure, yes.
Gotcha.
Yep.
So that really becomes a wash?
It's, it's pretty much, pretty much a wash, yep. I just didn't want that, that percentage to be shocking.
All those larger ones is good to hit on, I think, just to kind of make sure we are.
Yeah.
So then that software, that 20,000, most of that is Esri?
Yes and no. The software was, so the software was also reallocated, so if you look at the line item, the account 1113, there was, there was quite a bit of money in that, and software that's over 150,000, I don't think we'll ever purchase capitalized software. So we moved those funds out. Esri is kind of, has its own activity under the line items. It's, it's not reflected in here, it's kind of bundled in there. And Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong.
I think it's probably in 0442, the maintenance agreements. We have a lot of our software in that line.
Okay. Yep, so software, it's one of those things, software can also be renewals, can be seen as renewals and maintenance agreements. It's, it's how, however you classify certain softwares. Like New World, for example, is technically a software as a service, but we put it in maintenance renewals. But you could put in either or, and that'd be accurate. So those two items, those allocation moves are, that's, that's why that's 21.88% reflecting. Any questions regarding that?
The 2772, professional services that we were able to reduce, I assume that's because our staff picked up those services that we were doing previously with vendors?
Correct. That's actually a great segue.
Oh.
So professional services. So we, we do expect professional services to reduce this year. So as you recall, we had a, we were, we were contractually obligated to ACES and once, once that, once that went through its course as terms, we are now just utilizing ACES month to month just for antivirus service. So, and I think I've mentioned to some of you before, we are getting free antivirus and EDR services from the state for free, which is amazing. It's a huge cost savings. Unfortunately, we're moving at the speed of the state, so we did, just had a meeting yesterday and they did say it's now going to be February, March, which is amazing because originally it was going to be August. So it wouldn't have been cost effective to go out and get our own antivirus and sign into a multi-year contract only to not use them. So we, we felt it was just good to just keep bases on a month-to-month basis for, for antivirus. So as soon as the implementation happens with the state, we will, we will discontinue the services. And so that, you will also see a decrease in professional services.
And that's probably just this pretty standard 30-day-out?
Pretty, well, well, yeah, I think, yeah, just notification wise, yep.
Okay.
Yep. But no, we are not under contract anymore.
Sorry, that's a hard one, just trying to wrap my head around here. Software, you said software and maintenance contracts. Do we, do we have some contracts also in software? Or just trying to figure out why we, why we're putting them each in, in those two different lines?
I mean, technically, they could be the same line. It's classifying them is tricky because a lot of times it is software, but it also is a maintenance contract. So like I said, for example, New World is, is technically software as a service is what it's called. You can call it software, it's not technically installed, it runs through a web browser. So I guess if, by definition, if we, we can say if software is actually installed, maybe we can classify it as software. And then anything else, so I mean, if it's, if it, and I get it's sort of confusing because you have two different locations. I can certainly move everything under that one category, if that helps for tracking.
But the difference then?
It's just trying to figure out, just trying to figure out year over year, so we've got an idea of what's where. It's not, it's not necessarily a problem here, there's an explanation to it, but, yeah.
One's ongoing subscription type stuff, maintenance types of things, correct?
Yeah, I mean, they're all subscription-based anymore. That's, that's the thing, that's how the business works anymore, so.
I think one of the things we wanted you to see it separately too, if you look down in the capital section, you'll see that in 2023, in capital section, there was 20,000 budgeted for software. So because it, he believes we won't have anything, and that, remember, we talked about that we're changing and only putting things in capital that we have to capitalize. So we would only want software in that section if it's over 150,000. So that's why we left the 20,000 called software, but moved it up to the operating expenses. And I think that's really the reason you're seeing it separate is it was supposed to help you see that we moved stuff from capital into operating. And when we pay bills, depending on what they do, we may change that.
Thanks. I'll ask a question, please, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Al had a ISAC training last week, OCIO was presenting, and they were mentioning the fact that the antivirus programs that they provide for free are because they're getting a grant, which they don't know if that will go on indefinitely or what. So if that ever runs out, then we'll, we'll need to do something to replace that or, or pay for it or, or get it elsewhere, right?
Correct, yep. That was, I believe they mentioned they have it for three years is the contract. So they, they, they said they were all in on this, though. They, they plan on getting the funding for this indefinitely, is this, is how they portrayed it to us. So, which I still think, I think it's a great thing because, so the product that we're getting is called CrowdStrike, which is like one of the top-tier products. It's incredibly expensive if you pay for it. I don't even know how people afford it because it's, but it's, it's the top tier and I'm very happy to have that access to it for free, so.
And what'd you say that name of it was?
CrowdStrike.
CrowdStrike.
Yep. It's always in the Gartner ratings, it's always in the top quadrant, and it's arguably the number one product on the market.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding professional services or the operating expenses? Hey, capital request? I did have a few items for capital request. One of them is a plotter. So the, the plotter that was originally in the plat room for the auditors, that, that unfortunately passed away over a year ago, I think, and they've been without one since. Originally, we had it budgeted as an ARPA item, earmarked as an ARPA item, and unfortunately, it doesn't follow, it doesn't, it's not approved through the guidelines that, that weren't established back then. So I wanted to make sure that we get them a plotter because they, they definitely need it. So it'll be a plotter that has a scanning capability. So that's one of the items. The other item is a copier for maintenance. There's a starting to have mechanical issues, and this was also earmarked as an ARPA item. Any questions over those requests?
Aren't those gonna, they are not noted anywhere else then? They're in this budget?
They're just.
They'll be not, not put in those departments at all if it's in yours. Okay. Correct.
Yep. Cory and Michelle, she asked to just put them on this one, so I'm just putting it on. Yep, doesn't reflect in the numbers. And then lastly, the other item that we're requesting is a work service vehicle. The purpose of this vehicle is to safely transport equipment and staff between buildings, use it to take to conferences. We're seeking a small, either a small SUV or a van, estimated cost of $40,000. The intent is for IT to purchase the, purchase and cover maintenance. If there, if it is approved, it would, we would cover, we would create a line item for fuel and maintenance, et cetera. The goal is to have this vehicle shared between IT, HR, and the Board of Supervisors office. I fully admit that it would be difficult for us to justify a vehicle just for our department alone, but if multiple smaller departments take advantage of it, I think it will have value. Questions regarding the, the service vehicle request?
Yeah. I guess not many, it's pretty straightforward what you're gonna use it for, so I thought it's either just whether or not.
I think it'd be great for anyone, if they have a conference they need to go to, they can just borrow the vehicle and, and get going and, and, but. And we can also haul things out of the weather. I mean, we can always borrow trucks, but in, in the rain and stuff, that's kind of frowned upon for technology, so.
How much do you estimate, I guess, the time that IT would be using it? To think, you know, based on, I guess, your last year or whatever, I just want to estimate it only.
You know, I, I would say IT would probably use it if I was just comparing it to the other department. I think HR would actually use it quite a bit, too. But easily, we would use it, our fair share, 30, roughly 33%, but I can see us using 50% of the time that, that vehicle. So it just kind of depends on, there, there are months that we travel a lot and there's months that we don't. So it just kind of, kind of varies, so. That's why I, I wanted to include other departments into this, to just make sure that we can justify the, the use of it.
How did, Al, how did you come to the conclusion with the Board of Supervisors, or what brought that on?
I was just thinking of the smaller departments and, and I'm, I heard remarks of, you know, sometimes you guys go to conferences, things like that, and, and sometimes it's, it's not a struggle, but sometimes you have to schedule vehicles and, and sometimes it there, sometimes it not. Sometimes the vehicles aren't functioning. So if we can have a dedicated vehicle for those three departments, I think that would be very convenient. It sort of makes sense, and it would, it would be for the entire board office, so Michelle could also use it too, so. And if you think it, it, you know, justification needs to be broader, I mean, we could also include other smaller departments, too. I mean, it's kind of up in the air, but we're, we're willing to, you know, take on the maintenance and stuff like that, so. I, I do believe we will use it the most, but it'd be, be a nice thing to have for everyone.
Because currently, your own vehicles currently, I guess?
We just drive our own vehicles.
Right, okay, yeah.
And while we're insured because we're driving, I mean, it would be nicer to have, to transport official equipment on an official vehicle, work vehicle.
Is most of your use, did you think, gonna be locally then?
Yeah, the majority of it'd be local because we would be transporting a lot of equipment between the locations, so Conservation or Pinecrest. But we'd also take it to local conferences, say in Des Moines, things like that. We probably would never drive out of state if we can help it, but keep it, keep it local.
Is there any chance that we could pick up a car from another department that's rolling, theirs over?
I, I've asked about that. Like Captain Herbst actually offered his Charger to me at one point, but that was also pending ARPA approval for a new fleet, which didn't happen, so. And then I think, I did inquire when Nefisa was around about some of the, the health cars, but I, I'm not sure where, plus I know you guys were, you're probably covering that, so.
Okay.
And I'm not opposed to, you know, acquiring another vehicle from another department, if that's a viable.
Yeah, I know, a few, a few years ago, I got, I believe it was two, maybe three, from the Health Department. They only had around 90,000 miles on them.
Oh, nice.
For the Assessor's Office. And they were using them for years, I don't know, they may still have them over there, I don't know. And it worked pretty good locally, plus they took them out of town because our vehicles are supposed to be serviced on a regular basis, so they're usually in pretty good shape.
Sure.
In terms of size, I mean, does it, does it need to be an SUV or van? Or what type of equipment are you moving around that would require that level of size?
Sure, majority of the equipment's gonna be printers and computers. But every now and then, we will probably transport smaller network racks, servers, and servers are long, so preferably something with a hatch that can slide down. Technically, you could do it through a trunk if you pull the seats down, but that might not be as, as fun because servers can get heavy. If it's a giant network rack, we'll borrow a truck for those situations. And any other questions regarding that request?
No.
Okay, that's the end of my slides. Do you have anything else for me?
No questions?
No?
Chris or Tom, any more questions or?
No, I don't have anything, thank you.
No, I, I don't, thank you.
Okay, I have a presentation as well, and I'm battling a bit of an illness, so if you have a hard time hearing me, just let me know, I'll probably stop every once in a while to take a drink of water. I have, I have a little bit longer presentation than what Al has. So I guess.
That's great.
You'll probably be happy with him, but the reason I wanted to, the reason I wanted to just provide a little bit more background information is because there have been a lot of new people in roles as we've gone through this budget process. So first of all, I just want to thank all the people that have been part of helping put this budget together. We have Micah Kniebel and Matthew Verbraken, they're available here on the Zoom to answer any detailed questions. Of course, our management team that has helped put things together. And then Michelle has been tremendously helpful. I mean, we've gone back and forth over email, probably later than we should, for several nights in a row. So, so I just wanted to thank everyone that's kind of helped put this budget together. And also, not anticipating that I would do it last year, I was a little bit removed from the process and, and have learned a lot of things, so I just want to appreciate your grace and patience in advance as we talk through it. So, so as you know, the, the Board of Supervisors has authority over our Board of Health in generally three areas. So appointment of our board members, approval of our adopted rules and regulations for the Board of Health, and then, of course, appropriation of the county tax funds to the Board of Health for use of the operation. And so that's what we're here to talk about today. So the public health vision and mission, our vision is to ensure that people in our communities have equitable opportunities and resources to lead healthier, more fulfilling, and longer lives. And we accomplish that through our mission of protecting people in our community from health hazards, promoting healthy behaviors, and preventing disease. I'm not overly familiar with, or, you know, have a lot of information to know how people are familiar with our organizational chart, so I just wanted to kind of review that quickly. Our department consists of five functional units, administration, community health, our public health center, disease surveillance and investigation, and environmental health. We currently have 56.35 FTE, and we also are host sites for Food Corps, and we have one full-time Food Corps member currently in Green Iowa, Mira Corps, and we currently have one full-time Green Iowa, Mira Corps member. At this time, we do have three vacancies, of course, the Health Director, a public health nurse position, and a disease prevention specialist. And this organizational chart reflects kind of the functions that are assigned to each of our units. Iowa code and Iowa administrative code outlines that we have some, a basic requirement of public health services that we need to fulfill, and, excuse me, and those are outlined in various parts of code or administrative code. But at the very basis of what we do, we're required to impose and enforce quarantine and isolation for certain communicable diseases, furnish those supplies and services or care during the time of quarantine and isolation, report, excuse me, follow-up on communicable diseases that are reportable under Iowa law, provide immunization and dental audits for schools, provide immunizations to children if they're not available elsewhere, which is not the situation in our community, but it is something we're required to do. Ensure enforcement of animal control and infectious and contagious diseases, so rabies investigations, animal bite investigations, and quarantine private sewage disposal systems and the related time of transfer inspections, and then to complete a community health needs assessment at least every five years. So that's kind of what we are tasked with doing at the very basis of our work. Now, of course, we do things beyond the required services, and we use a couple of different frameworks to guide the work that we do in addition to our vision and mission. One of those frameworks is the 10 Essential Public Health Services. This framework was originally developed in 1994 in response to some national call to actions around the basic functions that public health should provide and the direction to go in the future. And it was recently updated, and the, the recently updated framework focuses on protecting and promoting the health of all people in all communities, putting equity at the core of the 10 essential services. And that was done to really drive home that everyone should have a fair and just opportunity to achieve optimal health and well-being. Another framework that we use to guide the services that we provide in the community is the foundational public health services. This is another national framework that was developed in 2013 to define a minimum package of services, or other words, skills, programs, and activities that must be available in state and local health departments everywhere for our health system to work anywhere. So this conceptual framework describes the capabilities and programs that no health department should be without. So we, additionally, we use this to guide the services that we provide in the community. Again, this was updated in 2022 with a notable addition of equity as an eighth foundational capability. You can see it across the bottom there. Really to outline and elevate its importance as a cross-cutting skill and capacity and reinforce the critical role of equity in ensuring community health and well-being. And then the third framework I just want to talk about quickly is social determinants of health. Excuse me. So many of you may be familiar with social determinants of health. It's a framework that guides the work that we do, again, related to health equity. And social determinants of health are the conditions and environments where people are born, live, work, play, worship, and age that affect a wide range of, oop. Something just moved, and I don't think I did it, but maybe I did. Where people are born, live, work, play, and worship, and age that affect a wide range of health, functioning, and quality of life, outcomes, and risks. And they are grouped into five domains. Those five domains are economic stability, so this includes things like employment, food insecurity, housing instability, and poverty. Education access and quality, those are things like early childhood development and education, enrollment in higher education, high school graduation, language and literacy. Healthcare access and quality, which includes things like access to health services, access to primary care and health literacy. Neighborhood and belt environment, which includes things like access to food that promote healthy dietary patterns, crime and violence, environmental conditions, and quality of housing. And then the fifth domain is social and community context, which includes things like civic participation, discrimination, incarceration, and social cohesion. And these social determinants of health contribute to health disparities and inequities when we see them in our community. Our staff in all of our programmatic areas encounter community members with unmet social determinants of health needs on a regular basis, something I'm gonna kind of refer to later in terms of our needs in our community. I also want to talk about our national accreditation quickly. So Blackhawk County Public Health was accredited within the last year in March of 2022. We're one of seven accredited health departments in the state of Iowa. And through some published literature, it's been shown that accreditation helps public health organizations stimulate our quality improvement, which helps us improve our efficiency of services and programs, improve accountability and transparency, improve capacity to provide high-quality programs and services, strengthen our relationship with key partners, use health equity as a lens for identifying and addressing health priorities, which I've talked about quite a bit, increase the extent to which, the extent to which we can use evidence-based practices. increase the extent to which we can use evidence-based practices, and then strengthen the utilization of resources. And so that's been a focus as we've pursued accreditation and then have functioned since the accreditation was awarded. Another thing I want to talk about is our workforce needs. Now, you're pretty familiar with this so far because I've talked about it a few times. But there are a few things that I want to point out. The Foundational Public Health Services, that framework that I mentioned a few slides back, the National Public Health Center for Innovations, which supports that framework, they recently released a public health workforce calculator to determine staffing that's needed to perform those foundational public health services at the national level. They've determined that about 80,000 additional FTEs are needed nationwide at the state and local public health level to achieve those foundational services. 54,000 of those FTEs are needed at the local level to provide adequate infrastructure and a minimum public health services to the nation. So the whole public health sector is experiencing quite a significant workforce need currently. The Public Health Workforce Interest and Needs Survey, or PHWINS, is a survey that's conducted every two years, so they'll do another one in 2023 here. And they've outlined a similar need of our workforce. About a third of the workforce that responded to that survey intended to leave their organization in the next year, 5% for retirements and 27% for other reasons. And I just want to highlight that about 41% of those that said that they intended on leaving were leaving, were intending to leave due to work overload or work burnout. Something I want to share about my experiences, I started at Blackfoot County Public Health just over a year ago in December of 2022. And since I've started, 17 of our positions have turned over. This includes five in their administration, three in environmental health, two in our disease surveillance and investigation, three community health and foreign or public health center. This is just over 30% of our workforce, given that we had 56 FTEs budgeted in FY22. Three of those 17 were 5%, were retirements. So what we're seeing in our department is directly reflective of what we were told to expect essentially. But it also tells us that our workforce is representative of what was seen in this national survey. And then, as you were able to hear from our University of Iowa colleagues, we did our own assessment with our staff, the learning culture assessment results, and the results kind of reinforce the national trends that we, our employees, do believe that there is a high workload, an inadequate number, and low retention of our staff. And so that's something that we really are, that I am really focused on, as well as the leadership team, to address and work on and try to get to a place where we have fewer percentage of our employees that are reporting, that we don't have enough staff to do the work that we need to do, that they're seeing increasing job responsibilities, or that we're able to retain qualified, competent, and committed employees. And so therefore, our FY24 budget proposal reflects these identified workforce needs. Any questions on kind of that background information before I go into the budget pieces? Okay, it was kind of an academic model, and I sort of like academic models, so I apologize if that's not your thing, but I feel like it's important to kind of lay the foundation. So first, I want to talk about revenue in our, in our budget. A couple of things that you're going to notice is that our local public health system grant funds, which are, which we receive from the State Department of Health and Human Services, previously, they were spread out throughout different organization codes. We're going to keep them in our health planning code, just because I find it simpler to kind of track those funds that way. And it helps me kind of understand where the funds are going and how they're being spent and things like that. So some of the increases or decreases, increases in the health planning and then decreases in the other organization codes are due to us retaining those funds in that organization code rather than spreading, spreading them out. We also did have one of our grants sunset. It was an $85,000 grant that we've had the last couple of years. This is a grant through the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services. It was titled the Technical Assistance to Identify Blood Pressure and Cholesterol Grant. So that impacts the overall revenue decrease of $85,000. We're also seeing Medicaid and private insurance revenue decreases. The amount budgeted for FY23, we're not seeing those actual amounts coming in, in F, or I'm sorry, the FY22 actuals and what we're seeing so far coming in FY23, we're seeing those lower than we previously budgeted. So we adjusted our revenue projection accordingly because we don't anticipate seeing those increase in FY24. However, with other revenue sources, there are no significant changes. So kind of a year-to-year comparison across our organizational codes, there are, you know, the percent change that you see for administration, chronic disease prevention, disease surveillance and investigation, those are largely due to the not splitting out that local public health services grant. And the increase subsequently in the health planning is kind of what largely contributes to the percent change from the 2023 budget. Overall, we are projecting a 2.2% increase in revenue total. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I've got a couple. You said there was, we were losing a couple of grants that you had funded the last few years?
One in particular, the, yes, the Technical Assistance for Blood Pressure and Cholesterol Grant. That is one that we've received, at least in FY22 and FY23, that is not being offered for renewal in FY24.
What was, the grant was for what, $85,000 you indicated?
Correct, yep.
What was that for? Services or, I mean, what were, was there any positions hired with that?
There weren't positions hired with it necessarily, but it has been used to partially supplement staff time. The grant was really to work with local health systems to look at patient data and identify risk factors for blood pressure and heart disease in general. And so we did use some of that grant to apply to salary. However, I'm not positive that the salary was budgeted to that grant, given that we knew that that was not a grant that was going to be permanent.
But we didn't hire anybody specifically for that grant?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to move into expenditures. So I adjusted, and I asked for Matt and Micah, who helped prepare the budget, to adjust our approach on budgeting, to include year-to-year budgeting for a couple of items that are predictable for replacement. Previously, these items would be included in one-time requests in individual budget years, which impacted consistency of budgeting year-to-year. And I really wanted to focus on sustainability and long-term planning for consistent budgets across the year. So we're not, you know, going up or down depending on large expenses. So we did change to take the approach of replacing our cell phones, cell phones every three years, so we're going to place a third of them every year. Our hardware, so printers, copiers, scanners, that kind of thing, to replace every five years. And then vehicles to replace every seven years, beginning in 2025. Largely, these replacement cycles are not, you know, set in stone, but are based just kind of on general recommendations for the longevity of the equipment. Because we did have some vehicle requests in ARPA, which is a little bit tangled with where that's at right now, but we didn't include any vehicle requests in 2024. However, we do have 21 vehicles in our fleet, and this maybe gets back to the question for Al on the vehicles. Most of them are assigned to our field staff for daily use, so our environmental inspectors that are out in the field, our disease surveillance staff that are out in the field, and community health staff that are out in the field. We do have a few in the pool, like that, you know, are available for reservation. I don't have the list with me, but I believe there are four vehicles in the fleet pool. However, two of them are vehicles that we would like to take out of the rotation because they are not very reliable. They have ongoing mechanical issues. So we do have a couple in our pool. However, they are housed at the Pine Crest Building, so the logistics of, you know, using it on a day-to-day basis, we would like to keep them housed at the Pine Crest Building rather than be housed here. So I think if we want to, you know, look at sharing of that, we just have to figure out how that works. Because if you're getting in the car to go over to Pine Crest, then you might as well take your equipment with you. And then, grant funding has ended for a few special projects. So these were not anything that were supported with salary or anything like that, but we had some funds to work on health equity from the Community Foundation, funds from the Otto Schweitz Foundation to work on mental health, and then funds from the University of Iowa to work on immigrant and refugee disability perceptions and needs. These were largely pass-through funds that were funded for the operational expenses of those projects. So it doesn't really impact kind of the, you know, salary or anything like that for FY24, but the revenues from those have decreased, but also so have the expenditures. And then professional services and software expenses, we are seeing those increase a little bit. I have a note, excuse me, I have a note on those. So a few examples of what those are are data sharing agreements, our laundry services, translation services, our storage agreements for our Public Health Preparedness Project, our biohazard disposal, our refrigerator and freezer maintenance for our vaccines. Those kinds of things are kind of what we're seeing increases in operations for professional services and software expenses. And then I want to talk a little bit about workforce needs. So any question on kind of the approach for consistent budgeting or anything else I just talked about before I go into the workforce needs?
I have a couple on the cars. A few years ago, the board requested that the Health Department come up with a criteria on rotating vehicles. And what brought this about was you were phasing or rotating vehicles that had 90,000 miles on them. And they were actually better than what employees were driving at home for their private cars or even the board. And so we request we have some kind of a criteria that you guys would set up to show why you're rotating a car. Because 90,000 miles this day and age isn't very many. The other one, are you still housing any vehicles in Cedar Falls Street?
We are not. The vehicles that were housed over at Cedar Falls were primarily for, to accommodate, you know, kind of more efficient timing of inspections in that area. And that was really preferred by a couple of staff, and both of those staff have since resigned. And so we did pull those vehicles back, and they're all housed at Pine Crest currently. And Supervisor Little, I am not familiar with the criteria for the rotation of cars. It's something I can definitely follow up on, but I haven't necessarily seen that document. I will say for the ones that we're wanting to rotate out, the two trucks in particular, I believe both of them are 2009. I can't speak to the mileage on them per se, but I know that we've had kind of different mechanical concerns. And then we have a couple of cars that we need to rotate out, and I believe they're 2010 Ford Fusions. One in particular, if not both of them, we have kind of slated that we don't take them out of town because they've had so many mechanical issues that we just, they're not reliable. And so those are kind of for in-town purposes only. So I, I understand the concern definitely of not rotating out cars that are, you know, still viable and usable and able to serve the purpose. But for the couple that we're wanting to rotate out now, they're not serving the purpose of what we need them to serve. So I do feel confident with a couple that we, that are in the rotation and slated to rotate out, that those do need to be rotated out.
Could you send the, could you send the board a list of your fleet, year, mileage?
Yep, I sure could.
Thank you. Who does the service for Health Department cars?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Servicing.
Who does the service on the vehicles?
Waterloo.
Waterloo?
Yep.
So it would be two trucks and two Fusions, I mean, some similar vehicles you're looking at when you're talking about replacement too?
Yeah, so the two trucks are the ones that are in the pool available for reservation in addition to a few cars. I think we have a 16 Fusion. That's like the nice car that we use for out-of-town and stuff like that. And then I can't remember what the other one is because personally, I've never driven it, so it hasn't stuck in my memory what it is. But I believe it's another car. In terms of talking about the pool to share with, you know, smaller departments, that's kind of what our pool looks like. And then the Fusions that I mentioned, those are assigned out currently to staff.
And we had a process, I know we were going through with ARPA that we were purchasing, but that got halted, I think. Did we purchase any vehicles at all, or were any?
We have, yep. So we requested eight total through Phase One and Phase Two funds. We issued a request for bids for all eight. The four in Phase One, we've received two of those. So they were Ford Escapes. Those were the two that we received in August of 2022. The other two that we requested in Phase One are, they're in a holding pattern right now. One of them was a situation where the bid was bid at a certain amount. I believe it was 35,000 or something like that. And a year later, it was finally available for delivery, and the dealer wanted to deliver it with a total cost 13,000 above what the bid was. So we had to reject the bid because it was not in compliance with their, or we had to reject the vehicle, excuse me, because it was not in compliance with their bid. And so currently, we are working on a questionnaire to move to the board so we can move forward. We're trying to get that vehicle, that vehicle we very much do need. That's a van for our dental team. Our dental team takes portable dental equipment out to the schools, and they rotate through the schools. Right now, they're using a car, and they're lifting it up into the trunk of the car. We're talking about, you know, stools and exam tables and that kind of stuff, and it's just not, it's just not a good idea for them to be doing that. And so that one is the one that we're trying to work through with getting approved. Supervisor Little, I know you've stated in meetings before your frustration with organizations and contractors agreeing to a certain price and then raising the price at a different point. And I will say with that process, I 100% have been frustrated with, with that. And so we're trying to work through it, through the process, through, to request that for, again, through the ARPA funds, but we haven't received that one. And then the fourth vehicle in that Phase One was a, was a truck to replace one of the trucks in our pool that we have in rotation. Rotation, excuse me. That one, the dealer canceled the order because we had ordered it in 2022. It's supposed to be a 2222 model. The manufacturer had not gotten to manufacture that yet, so they are only manufacturing 2023. Therefore, we have to rebid. However, we can't rebid under the new ARPA process. And Mike has been involved in all these conversations, so if he wants to weigh in, I will let him do that.
Very quickly, and Caitlin and I have communicated several times about this, bottom line is they had to reject two bids. Initially, it was determined by the prior ARPA Committee Chair that the, that the vehicle, and with consultation with Baker Tilly, that the vehicles were not qualified for ARPA, and therefore, the vehicles that had been ordered for 2022 were placed under lost revenue. However, two of those did not come. It was for 2022 were were placed under lost revenue. However, two of those did not come. It was determined by the committee that, you know, because it was now being placed under lost revenue, any prior approvals were now null because those had anticipated an expense category for those. The Health Department is taking another crack because they think that some, at a couple of these, because they think that some of these may qualify under an expense category. And that's why additional questionnaires are being prepared, especially for this one that I believe takes dental equipment to to schools to treat children in the school. Thought process is that that could be utilized as a means to prevent certain, or prevent spread of disease. And the other one, I'm not sure what the justification is going to be, but I think you were taking a look at that one as well.
Mm hmm.
So that's where we're at right now. And otherwise, my comment in a prior communication was the other routes of funding would be to convince the board to fund it under replacement revenue or lost revenue, or to to put it in the budget.
Yeah.
And we have it in this budget. As you can see, we don't have any vehicles in our FY24 budget. Kind of hoping that at least the van for the dental equipment will be successful through the ARPA process. And if not, it would be very unfortunate, but we would try again for the next budget.
Because it's really needed now.
I would, I would like to say, Caitlin, that I commend you on that inflated price on that vehicles. Unfortunately, that's been going on. I do think it's starting to relieve a little bit. But as you indicated, I was frustrated. I kind of wish some of our other departments would have took yearly, because that's ridiculous. We'd be paying 15, 20, 30,000 dollars more for a vehicle just because we're in this certain time. So again, I commend you and your department for doing that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we're in a little bit of a different situation. It's my understanding that some of the other departments, it was not ARPA funds, it was budgeted funds, and so they had flexibility, whereas we just did not have the flexibility even to consider it because it was ARPA funds. And, and, you know, you guys as a board have been pretty clear what your intent was with how to spend those funds. So it's not exactly apples to apples, but certainly, we couldn't accept the cost of the vehicle for 13,000 more than what the bid was. That was a clear violation.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this before I move on to kind of workforce? So I do have physician requests or modifications to five physicians. I'm going to go through each one of these positions separately, but just kind of wanted to summarize that I'll be walking through five different positions that I want to either, it's either a request or a modification of an existing FTE. So first of all, is our public health preparedness position. These funds for public health preparedness that would support this position come through our Service Area Six Preparedness Coalition. It's often referred to by us as SA Six or Service Area Six. It is a group of 14 counties. That's identified by the Iowa Department of Public Health, and we are one of those 14 counties. Breamer County is our fiscal agent. Breamer County, or I'm sorry, Buchanan County is our fiscal agent. Buchanan County led a discussion to shift funding to a population based formula. So previous, in previous years, the funding was split equally among all 14 counties in the service area, and Buchanan County took the lead to reformulate the funding to have it be considered on the population of the county of how much that county would receive. That was approved by the service area in November to move forward. Therefore, we are anticipating an increase in revenue from 2023 to 2024 that will total $49,222 from Service Area Six. Again, this is through our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant. These funds are very reliable. So the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant was established after 9/11. The first funds came through in 2003, and we've seen these funds continue over time. So I'm very confident that by creating a position that would be supported by these funds, it would be sustainable over time, and it's not something that we would see go away anytime soon, particularly the fact that we just had the COVID pandemic and, you know, a demonstrated need for continued public health preparedness. So what I'm proposing is a is a full-time position shared with Black Hawk County Emergency Management Agency. Mindy and I have been in conversations. There, the EMA Commission previously had approved a half-time position. And so we'd like to build upon that half-time position that was already approved, transition it into a full-time position, and share between public health and EMA. The duties of the position would be fairly similar. I think that Mindy is really looking at somebody to assist with plans and that kind of thing. And that's along the lines of what we need is someone to assist with planning, community partnership development, that kind of thing. So we estimate at a GS14, we've worked with Amanda to kind of put a job description together, but that's not finalized yet. So it hasn't gone through the the process for grading. So I'm just kind of guessing that it might come through at a 14. It certainly wouldn't come through above that, I don't believe. But a half-time FTE at a GS14 is 42,139. Therefore, it's 100% grant funded position. I will also add that if we do not move forward with the half-time position, we also will not be able to accept the grant funds because the grant funds are very strict in what is allowable. Previously, stuff or things or equipment was able to be purchased, and they're really not approving that anymore. They really are focusing on using those funds to build the workforce. Any questions on that one? The second position that I would like to make an adjustment to is our public health nurse childcare nurse consultant. We currently have two individuals that serve as childcare nurse consultants at a capacity of 1.3 FTEs. One is 1.0 and one is a 0.3 FTE. I'm proposing an increase from 0.3 to 0.4 due to our child and adolescent health grant requirements for the childcare nurse consultant. In, in the FY23 contract with Iowa Department of Health and Human Services, it's been outlined in our contract that any childcare nurse consultant that works on healthy childcare Iowa has to be a minimum of a 0.4 FTE. So that's why I'm asking for this, is to be in compliance with our contract. We did receive an increase of $25,263 of healthy childcare Iowa funds, which comes through our child health grant, and early childcare Iowa funds, which comes through an agreement with EPI, CCRNR. And so that is more than what we need to increase this position from a 0.3 to a 0.4 by 0.1 FTE, because the increase of that 0.1 FTE will be $8,173 in FY24. Any questions on that?
This is another scenario where if we if we weren't to do this, we would lose out on that grant funding. Is that correct?
If we weren't to do this, we technically would be out of compliance with our contract with Iowa Department of Health and Human Services for Child Health Services. We would have to work with them to determine if they would allow us a waiver or how we would proceed with that. But technically, the reason I'm asking for this increase is because of compliance.
How long is the contract for?
I believe it's a four-year project period off the top of my head. I'm not remembering.
And the contract covers the salary?
The...
The funding, I mean.
The funding covers partial salary. So this is braided funds. The childcare nurse consultant is is supported through braided funds through the Child Health Grant, which is the Healthy Childcare Iowa Funds, also through funds appropriated by the Early Childhood Iowa Boards in the in the service area. And then we do use some in tax support for Black Hawk County because the Early Childhood Iowa Board that covers Black Hawk County, they are not able to allocate an amount large enough to pay for the Black Hawk County child cares.
Okay, thank you.
The fourth position that I want to talk about is the information analyst. This is the one that Al touched on in his presentation. So currently, we have a public health information analyst position at a GS17. It's a 1.0 FTE. We're proposing reducing that FTE in our budget to share with information technology, of course, pending approval. This would be a transfer of $47,753 to the IT Department. It would be maintained at 1.0 FTE across the two departments. And we've discussed this, Al, the person that would be impacted, and I and Amanda have discussed this. We really believe it's a kind of a win-win-win-win situation where the person that's currently in this role is performing duties that really are information technology duties, just doesn't have the the access and the oversight and, you know, those kinds of things from the IT Department to do them. And that that individual would continue to support the pieces for health that we need them to continue to support, including our data governments, including our different systems that we have that houses our programmatic and operational data and our information management systems. This person also kind of is the one in charge of our electronic health record, which many different programs use, and does the quality assurance in our electronic health records. They're also in charge of our HIPAA compliance, including privacy and security kind of lead, and then provides technical assistance and support for different software applications within the department. You wouldn't think that there would be all of that to do, but we have a lot of different data systems and technology systems that support our programs, and this person is really integral to making sure that they all run. So that's kind of what we would see for this position. Any further questions on that? Okay, the fourth position I want to talk about is a new position proposal. This is for a dental hygienist. I'm proposing a new 1.0 FTE dental hygienist position at a GS14B. This is prompted by, again, contractual changes in our FY23 Child and Adolescent Health and Oral Health Programs contract. That contract shifted focus for our current ICE Mile Coordinator, who is a dental hygienist, to increase the amount of time that is grant funded, but takes away from our ability to provide direct services. So that, our ICE Mile Coordinator is now required to do 32 hours a week or four days a week of systems and infrastructure building activities. And previously, that our ICE Mile Coordinator was doing systems and infrastructure building activities, but also providing direct services in the schools and other direct service capacity. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit. The proposed position expense is $88,626. This is eligible for Medicaid revenue. We do bill our dental services in the schools to Medicaid, both Delta Dental and MCNA, the two MCOs for dental in the state of Iowa. However, we did not estimate the potential revenue created in our revenue proposal. It is not reflected in there. So the expenses are very conservative. The expense to revenue, I guess, is a very conservative estimate of what the overall impact would be. In between, when the Board of Health approved our budget and today's presentation, our ICE Mile Coordinator has been doing a lot of work to work with our state oral health consultant to kind of estimate what those revenues would be. And they looked at a period of time between October 1, 2021, and October 1, 2022, which is our, the federal fiscal year that this grant operates on, and looked at the services that were offered with our second hygienist that does primarily direct care. However, she's only a 0.75 FTE. And if the same services were provided, that was provided in that period of time, they're estimating that the revenues from Medicaid would be about $60,000. However, I would anticipate it would be higher than that, given that this would be a 1.0 FTE rather than a 0.75 FTE, providing those direct care services. So I just want to be transparent that we didn't put that in our revenue as a projected revenue. We had kind of a difficult time estimating what the revenue would be, to be quite honest, and that's why we didn't put it in there. But have kind of since learned some additional information about what potential revenue could be. And I just want to talk a little bit more about the need for this dental hygienist. So our oral health program currently consists of 1.75 dental hygienists and two dental assistants. So we have four individuals for a total of 3.75 FTEs. With another hygienist, we would be able to serve more children in our ICE Mile at School program to provide dental sealants. Additionally, in the past two years, we've only been doing the minimum requirement by our grant, providing sealants to second and third graders, and we would be able to expand to other grades, including pre-K, kindergarten first grade, and then fourth through sixth graders. We're currently also not doing prophylaxis or cleanings because we don't have the capacity to provide them to students. Our oral health program consists of the ICE Mile program, which is that systems and infrastructure work, including developing relationships with physicians and dentists, really working on our dental referral network, to make sure that kiddos that have needs can get in for care, and to do oral health promotion in the community. Our ICE Mile at School program offers sealants to all schools with 40% or greater free and reduced price lunch eligibility. Kiddos that are identified with high or moderate risk upon screening, or low risk as needed. But to be completely honest, we're not getting to those low risk right now because we have so many kiddos that have high and medium moderate risk. We also provide care coordination to ensure that they can get connected to a dentist and receive care. We also provide direct services, the screening, a risk assessment, fluoride, varnish, silidium fluoride, which is kind of to, it's like a stopgap to prevent further decay from decay that's currently happening, and then sealant applications. Unfortunately, Black Hawk County is the number one in the state for childhood tooth decay. And we've seen this increasing over the last couple of years. In 2022, about 34% of our kiddos have had tooth decay. And I have a couple of pictures. These kiddos are, we're seeing within the past year at Fred Becker Elementary, Lincoln Elementary, and Lowell Elementary. Tooth decay is the most common chronic disease in children, which is five times more common than asthma even. And the American Academy for Pediatrics states that nearly one in four children aged two through five experience dental cavities. So this is kind of, when I talk about oral health decay, these pictures here depict what we're talking about. So this top picture is a seven-year-old in a local elementary that was referred for an immediate referral. This kiddo has an abscess on their gum. I don't know if you can see it. It's a pretty small picture, but there's 11 areas of concern present. The kiddo in the bottom picture is a five-year-old. It's also an immediate referral, also has an abscess present, and there were 10 areas of concern. And this oral health, the tooth decay rates that we're seeing is is increasing the need for care coordination, which is another service that our oral health team provides, which is reimbursable through Medicaid and through our grant, through Medicaid administrative funds. So in FY22, our oral health team did over 1,000 care coordination services for kiddos, largely due to, you know, some of the largely due to, you know, some of the concerns that you're seeing here. This top picture, again, a six-year-old, nine areas of concern, immediate referral. In the bottom picture, an eight-year-old, an immediate referral with two areas of concern and an infection present. You can see the abscess kind of at the bottom by the the gloved finger there. And abscesses are extremely concerning for kiddos. They it's an infection, and that can become pretty serious. So the reason that we're seeing a need for care coordination services is that we are seeing a decrease in our dental providers that are accepting new Medicaid patients. For example, our kindergarten dent among our kindergarten dental screening certificates, which is that's one of the things that we do is we audit dental screening certificates in the schools. Urgent cases have increased from 1.1% for the 2021 school year to 5.3% for the school year of of dental needs. And the percentage of students screened by a dentist has gone down by 9.2%, assuming that this is due to the lack of providers that are accepting Medicaid in Black Hawk County. So we're we're seeing some pretty significant needs among our children, and and that's why the support for a dental hygienist is really needed. We can recoup most of the cost of this through billing, not all of it, but most of it. But really, the need in our community, I really am worried about what we will continue to see if we don't provide some more preventative services. We have a couple of partners that provided some testimonials. You have them in front of you, so I'm not going to read them. But our Irving Elementary Health Office provided kind of a statement of their support for a dental hygienist to join our oral health team. At Irving Elementary, this is their report card for for this year. There were 183 kiddos that were screened at the school for the ICE Mile at School. And among those 183 kiddos, 30 were identified with urgent health needs. So that's a pretty significant number, and that's just one. You know, we just picked Irving just because she was willing to provide us a letter of support. It's not, you know, not reflective of a different need at that school as compared to other schools. Our partners at People's Community Health Clinic, they see, you know, a lot of the same need that we are seeing, and so they kind of provided what they're seeing as well. And I think for those of you that have the paper versions, there's a letter from the dental clinic manager at People, from Tammy Bremeyer at People's Community Clinic, about kind of the need for adding to preventive services, preventative oral health services in the county. In terms of return on investment, these kiddos that are slipping through the cracks and have, you know, advanced tooth decay and severe oral health needs, it can cost more than $11,000 for a dental surgery, whereas if we could just get them in for two preventive dental checkups a year, it'd be $345. So in terms of the cost to the community, the, you know, in public health, we know that prevention is always the preferred the preferred route, but it really is a cost savings for our community as well. So any any questions on the dental assistant, dental hygienist in the oral health program?
Are these services performed at the school?
Most of them are, yes.
Do you have to have parents' authorization?
We do. Yep. So we work with the schools to send home a consent form, and the oral health team is, I will say, the oral health team, they are four very energetic, very hardworking individuals. And so this year, they provided some incentives for kids that returned their consent for services. And so we saw our consents go through the roof this year, and so we saw a lot of kids return their consent forms. And so our numbers for FY23, I think they're going to go higher than what I just showed. But yes, the parents do consent to services. They are seen without their parent. You know, they just come into the school, they pull them out of class, they do the screening, they put them back in class. It really is a good model that way because a lot of the kiddos that we see, the parents report that some of their barriers to care are not being able to take time off work, or not having transportation to get to the dentist. This this graphic here that I have on the screen, you know, kind of reflects that, that, you know, 51% of our Medicared Medicaid-enrolled Iowans did not receive dental visits in 2018. And that's not because they don't have coverage necessarily, but it's because of other reasons. And so us going into the school to provide those services really kind of addresses the other reasons that they're not getting into care. I will say the silver diamine parent does need to be present for that service to occur just because it leaves a visible spot on the tooth. It's a it leaves like a black spot on the tooth, and that can be kind of surprising to parents that aren't familiar with the silver diamine. So they have the parent present for that one, just to kind of provide some additional educational information. But all the other services they do in the school after written consents provided.
Who does your billing, your Medicaid billing?
We do it in-house.
You do it in-house?
So we use a program through that's supported through the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services called Soft Tactics. And I will say, if you have a lot of questions about that, I have to defer to somebody else. But we we do it in-house. We have a we do our data entry into our data management system that the school provides, and then the billing goes through kind of another software system. But we but we do that with our staff that we have.
Okay. Do you foresee on these positions, when you talk about them, do you foresee any additional costs other than the actual wage?
There could be supply costs. If we're seeing more kids, then, of course, we need the equipment and supplies to see the kids, the fluoride, varnish, that kinds of things. But those are largely costs that we use to purchase with the revenue that's brought in.
Okay. I just know a lot of times, you know, we the board approves to hire a position, not near a department, but any department, and then three months later, oh, by the way, we need another $100,000 for this. And it was never mentioned at the time of hiring, so that's a reason for that question. I thank you very much. Sounds like a good program.
Yeah. And I will say, you know, obviously, equip a office space, a computer, like that kind of stuff, the startup, the startup costs would be needed for that position. But in terms of ongoing costs, it would just be the supplies to provide the services that are part of the ICE Mile program.
Thank you.
And then the last position that I want to talk about, and I know I've been talking a lot, so I'm going to try to get this covered quickly, is a community health worker. Again, this is a proposed new position of 1.0 FTE at this at a GS level 12. Throughout the last year, we have seen a significant increase in community need related to access to care and unmet social determiner of health needs. Primarily, what we're seeing right now is this is linked to our tuberculosis program that the reference to Iowa Administrative Code 139A, or Iowa code, excuse me, 139A and Iowa Administrative Code, Chapter 641, that refers to our quarantine and isolation codes that require us to approve to to perform quarantine and isolation or voluntary confinement for individuals of communicable diseases that meet the criteria for quarantine and isolate isolation, which includes tuberculosis. And then the Iowa Administrative Code really outlines that the needs of isolated or quarantine individuals shall be addressed in a systematic and competent fashion, including but not limited to providing adequate food, clothing, shelter, means of communicating with those in and outside of isolation or quarantine, medication, and competent medical care. So in in 2022, we've we've had eight cases of active tuberculosis. On average, from 2014 to 2021, we've had 4.1 cases. So our cases of TB have doubled this year. When we get a case of tuberculosis, we work with that patient for them to enter into voluntary confinement until they're no longer infectious. And with the cases that we've seen this year, they've been pretty complicated cases. They've been in voluntary confinement for a pretty long lengths of time compared to what we've seen. We think it's because that they've gone without access to care for such a period of time that their disease has progressed significantly. Therefore, to recover from that, it takes a longer period of time. That's not, I don't have date on that, but that's kind of our assumption of what we think is is happening. So right now, we have a temporary communicable disease nurse that we requested, just we had to to meet the needs of what we're required to do under Iowa law. We had a lot of vacancies and positions at the time. We didn't have the nurse staffing to to kind of surge from other areas that had nurses in the department. So we have a we have a temporary communicable disease nurse that's assisting with these right now. We'll have we will have that temporary nurse through March or approximately March of this year. However, we don't have a good plan for 2024. You know, this year, we were able to kind of adjust and pivot to get a temporary nurse on board when we had vacancies, however, hoping that we're going to get our vacancies filled. But I don't anticipate that the the needs of our community is going to go away. We fully anticipate that with investigation of the cases that we have right now, we're going to uncover more cases. And so isn't something that the need is going to drop off into next year, unfortunately. I try not to kind of dig too much into the details because this is personal health information for people in our community, and so I don't really want to kind of go too much into it. But that's kind of the the need and the justification behind having a staff person that is able to help with these unmet social determiner of of health needs for people that we're placing into to voluntary confinement.
Caitlin, would it be allowable for you to talk a little bit about what your staff has to do for those cases, especially with the doubling of effort or cases?
Yeah.
What it takes for you to serve them?
Absolutely. So when we are notified of a new case, we kind of go through that contact tracing and investigation procedure. I think a lot of people became familiar with that under COVID of what that looks like. That's kind of what we do for other communicable diseases as well. We start with that person and, you know, help them get treatment established. So our tuberculosis team really works with establishing appropriate care and treatment regimens. With our active cases, it is a daily visit to that individual to ensure that they are taking their medication, that we call them DOT, daily observed therapy. So it's a daily DOT visit until the person is completed with their medication regimen, which often is a 12-week regimen. We've had people go beyond that, to be honest. So we provide that daily DOT and then also do the investigations on anyone that would potentially be exposed to them, investigate whether they have infection or latent infection. And then if they do, then it's also a treatment regimen with them as well. And so one of our TB nurses kind of provided just as of December, things that were going on. So in December, they were providing daily visits or EDOT. Sometimes they're able to do like it's a secure platform where they watch a video of somebody, and then they are able to confirm it that way, taking their medication of eight They also had one patient who was a pediatric patient that was on therapy due to an exposure. They had kind of a different type of medication that they were doing for three other patients that were due to a pediatric exposure. They call it window treatment, but I I am learning what window treatment means, so. But they had three other patients that were doing that. And they have 31 patients that are taking medication for latent tuberculosis infection, and so they're managing the treatment and monitoring for completion on those 31 patients. And and they're continuing to perform their contact investigations for the cases that we're working with currently, if that helps provide a better picture of the workload of what they're doing. And at the same time, you know, for those that we have, particularly those that we have in voluntary home confinement, we have had patients that have been homeless or recently homeless that have not had had transportation, that have not had food, that have not had childcare. When you're in voluntary home confinement, you can't be around your children. And so if it's not a if it's not a two-adult household that provides additional concerns and complications, so there have been all kinds of just complicated situations that, to be quite honest, I don't think this team has seen previously. So they're they're learning a lot this year, not in a way that they necessarily wanted to.
So the workers then work with those clients then to find the childcare and meet those needs and that type of thing with them?
That's what we're needing to do. Yeah. Other questions?
It was helpful to explain a little more what they did. I certainly didn't know either. Thank you.
Okay. So then I'm just going to quick go through our expenditures to wrap us up here. So our expenses for kind of a year-to-year comparison, the the accounts that are listed here are pretty much in alignment with our organizational structure, not exactly, but but pretty close. Our child health account really is outside of that structure that supports community health and our public health center both. But overall, we're seeing our expenses increase 4.7% increase from our 2023 budget. And if there are questions about any of our revenue or expenses, I think Matt and Micah are still on if there's anything like specific that I can't answer.
In your proposed expenses, you've got the dental position, but not in the revenue, correct?
Correct.
Anybody have any more questions online, Chris or Tom?
Nope.
Thank you.
No, I think it was a pretty thorough presentation, so I appreciate it.
All right. Well, then I will get us wrapped up. So kind of in summary, what we're looking at for our FY24 budget is a budget totaling It is a 4.7 increase from our FY23 approved budget. The proposed budget will be funded by $2,282,626 in operating revenue, resulting in a total property tax asking of $3,758,558. It is a 6.3% increase compared to the FY23 approved budget. And I just wanted to provide a summary of our FTEs, given that we've gone over five different positions, to kind of give a snapshot of what we're looking at from previous years. So the last couple of fiscal years, our FTEs have remained steady at 56.35 FTEs, and what I presented today reflects a total FTEs of 58.75.
A lot of good information. I said I appreciate the presentation too, and handout as well, so I can... As I said, I appreciate the presentation too, and the handout as well, so I can make notes and look back and refer to, so that's great. Thank you.
I have our more traditional presentation, but she did such a good job in hers. I don't know if you want to look at it. We certainly can, but I
Was there anything you want to point out? I was going to say two particular
I think, as I said, Kaitlin did a nice job of
Oh, very.
Going through everything.
And being ill to do it.
Yes.
So thank you for
And we're, we've both been working late on this the last couple of nights, so I feel bad. She's not even feeling well today. But we've, yeah, I really think she did a good job covering what changed, so.
Just a quick question again about that, the Medicaid reimbursement for the dental. Wouldn't we want to include, if we were to include the $88,000 on the salary line, if we're going to hire, wouldn't we want to include the anticipated revenue? In terms of, in terms of our tax asking?
Yes, I think, and I'll talk to Kaitlin about the comfort level, at what level of revenue Medicaid is difficult to estimate, but I, from what she's told us today, I believe we can put something in for revenue.
I think the only thing to consider is, you know, the Board of Health did approve the revenues and expenditures and overall budgets at what I presented, so I'm not sure if there's something that we would need to do to go add to them, or I'll look into that.
We'll have to explore that, yeah.
Yeah, full time, but thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Little longer than ours.
She's got a few more things in her budget. 60 employees instead of six.
And we were scheduled to have a couple more, but today, but there were some issues with kind of working through a few things.
Yeah, the county attorney wasn't going to be available. He found out this morning, and we're still ironing out a couple wrinkles in the sheriff's budget to make sure we're on the same page with staffing.
Okay.
I think I will take an opportunity though, because I think there were only two of you that were here when I brought this up on Tuesday. But there is a bill in the state legislature that will have an impact on our tax valuations, of all things, for this year. They, it's kind, I'm going to refer to it kind of as a technical corrections bill, but it involves the change of the reclassification of multi-residential property to purely residential. And when I did our property values, I noticed that residential rollback went up 4%, which it's supposed to be capped at 3. And unfortunately, apparently, the state has now realized that as well. So if that passes, which it appears it may be likely to, that will reduce our taxable valuations. I can't, I don't really have a prediction. An early thing was that it might just be flat with last year, so that's just another factor we have to keep an eye on to see what the legislature does with that. I would hope, if they're going to pass it, that they will do it quickly. I'm surprised they haven't done it by now, actually.
Since we're in budget
Because, yeah, I mean, you know, the auditors, everybody had deadlines to get this information out, and now it might all have to be redone. And it, it will impact everybody that has to do a budget, so there's a lot, a lot of moving pieces with that, but I just wanted to make you aware of that, make sure everybody knows that, something else that might be coming.
Yeah, impact.
Could I add some comments to that?
Yeah, please.
This is something that ISAC has been following, and they held a meeting with the executive boards of the County Supervisors Affiliate and the County Auditors Affiliate yesterday, and they were strongly urged to push for extensions on deadlines involving budgets because, like Michelle said, you know, the valuations affect all local government budgets, and many entities are, you know, midway through the process, near the end of their process. They have deadlines for, you know, maximum tax levy for the final budget, and it's, even if they do act quickly, and it does appear that the legislature will take action on this, what they consider quickly, in the midst of our current situation, being in the middle of budgets, could extend timelines for a lot of entities, and so hopefully, they will change the deadlines for these entities.
That's great. I was going to say too, to Michelle, tomorrow at the UCC call, I was going to say I'll double check, but if that's the subject, it might be something you want to listen into or
Be interested to hear what they think is going on.
Sure, just an update.
And we're expecting some guidance from the Department of Management on this soon.
I was going to say
It would have been nice if they would have given us more last fall, because there's a memo out from the Legislative Services Agency that was written last November that explained this situation, but it wasn't made available to us until last week.
Would that, I would think the Department of Management would almost have to agree with the extensions, would they not? I mean, it doesn't do us any good to have an extension, and then them say
Well, the extensions I'm talking about would be in the law, and so the Department of Management would be required to follow that.
They'd have to do, okay. Yeah.
I don't know if I want an extension necessarily, but
Too bad they didn't do it last year.
It's better than nothing. You think this isn't going to pass?
A bunch of purgatory can get over.
Yeah, probably the extension, they think about what else they can pass to still impact this year too.
That's true, yeah, that's exactly right. Weather mandates are coming down the pike, yeah.
That's good, Chris. Well, is there anything else to discuss today regarding budget or
I don't think so.
Related questions for anyone that, okay. And then, and then those two that were supposed to be today will be Tuesday?
I hope they're going to be Tuesday, yes.
That's the plan.
That is the plan.
Depending everything works.
Yes. Get all the numbers
Was done though, it's just that he couldn't make it today, correct?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay, great. Well, no more discussion. I was going to say, is there motion for adjournment?
I'm moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.